It is, it is good to see everyone happy and engaged today. Glad you are here this day. Okay, well, we have a lot to get to. Wow, what a, what a combo here. In our book, let's just turn there, if you would, please. We are going to be looking at chapter 11, which is on page 281, 281. That is what we are going to be getting through, working through today. And that is Daniel 10 and 11 in the Word of God. So I, I thought what we would do, if you are good with this, we would read the Word of God. I want to offer some, some notes that I, I hope you will find helpful and then hit some, hit some highlights in the Agent's book. So let's, uh, let's do this. Let's turn to Daniel now in the Word of God, if you would, please. Begin with ver- uh, chapter 10. And once we are, are there, I'm going to offer a word of prayer for us, please. And then we'll, we'll begin here. Let's, let's pray. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, Lord, good to be, Lord, with fellow believer hungry for your word. We just pray certainly your blessing upon this time, Lord, in your truth, in your word, Lord. We want to honor you in all that we do. Good, very good to do it together, Lord. Bless this time in Jesus' name. Amen, amen. Okay, well, since chapter 10 is rather short, but, but very much connected to 11, let's, uh, let's do this. Let's have someone, as they are led, read through chapter 10 and then we'll break up, we'll break up 11 accordingly. So whoever feels led, go ahead and let's, uh, let's read it, read it through, please.
In the third year of King Cyrus of Persia, a word was revealed to Daniel, who was named Belteshazzar. The word was true and it concerned a great conflict. He understood the word and having received understanding and the vision. At that time, I, Daniel, had been mourning for three weeks. I had eaten no rich food, no meat or wine had entered my mouth, and if I had not adorned myself at all for the full three weeks. On the 24th day of the first month, as I was standing on the bank of the great river, that is, the Tigris, I looked up and saw a man clothed in linen with a belt of gold from up, up paths around his waist. His body was like beryl, his face like lightning, his eyes like flaming torches, his arms and legs like the gleam of burnished bronze, and the sound of his words like the roar of a multitude. I, Daniel alone, saw the vision. The people who were with me did not see the vision, though a great trembling fell upon me, and they fled and hid themselves. So I was left alone to see this great vision. My strength left me, and my complexion grew deathly pale, and I retained no strength. Then I heard the sound of his words, and when I heard the sound of his words, I fell into a trance, face to the ground. But then a hand touched me and roused me to my hands and knees. He said to me, "Daniel, greatly beloved, pay attention to the words that I am going to speak to you. Stand on your feet, for I have now been sent to you." So while he was speaking this word to me, I stood up trembling. He said to me, "Do not fear, Daniel, for from this day, first day, that you set your mind to gain understanding and to humble yourself before your God, your words have been heard. I have come because of your words." But the prince of the kingdom of Persia opposed me 21 days. So Michael, one of the chief princes, came to help me, and I left him there with the prince of the kingdom of Persia and have come to help you understand what is to happen to your people at the end of days. For there is a vision, a further vision, for those days. While he was speaking these words to me, I turned my face upward, the ground, and was speechless. Then one in human form touched my lips, and I opened my mouth to speak and said to the one who stood before me, "My lord, because of the vision such pains have come upon me that I have retained no strength. How can my lord serve and talk with my lord? For I am shaking; no strength remains in me, and no breath is left in me." Again, one in human form touched me and strengthened me. He said, "Do not fear, greatly beloved; you are safe. Be strong and courageous." When he spoke to me, I was strengthened and said, "Let my lord speak, for you have strengthened me." Then he said, "Do you know when I have come to help, come to you? Now I must return to fight against the prince of Persia, and when I am through with him, the prince of Greece will come. But I have to tell you what is described in the Book of Truth. There is no one with me who contends against these princes except Michael, your prince."
All right, thank you, thank you, Robert. Folks, before we move into chapter 11, let's, uh, let's look back at verse 14. I think that is a, a focus verse that I would like for us to, to highlight and start. It kind of brings it all together and gives, gives the section, section of Scripture here some focus. So I want us to, to please take, take note of that. Of course, we are, we are seeing a, a lot of interaction here. Kings, princes, kingdoms, the archangel Michael there. So I, I know you have, you, you have read that along with me and certainly have taken note of all the, the various characters here. Okay, let's, uh, let's do this, beginning with chapter 11, that is. I've got, okay, I've, I've got a, I've got a natural break after verse 13, verse 13. So whoever would like to read chapter 11, verses 1 through 13, please, please do.
Also, in the first year of Darius, the Mead, I, even I stood up to confirm and strengthen him. And now I will tell you the truth. Behold, three more kings will arise in Persia, and the fourth shall be far richer than them. By his, by his strength, through his riches, he shall stir up all against the realm of Greece. Then a mighty king shall arise, who shall rule with great dominion and do according to his will. And when he has arisen, his kingdom should be broken up and divided toward the four winds of heaven, but not among his posterity, nor according to his dominion with which he ruled, for his kingdom shall be uprooted even for others besides these. Also, the king of the south shall become strong, as well as one of his princes, and he shall gain power over him and have dominion. His dominion shall be a great dominion, and at the end of some years, they shall join forces for the daughter of the king of the south shall go to the king of the north to make an agreement. But she shall not retain the power of her authority, and neither he nor his authority shall stand. But she shall be given up to those who brought her and with him who got her, and with him who strengthened her in those times. And from the branch of her roots, one shall rise in his place, who shall come with an army, enter the fortress of the king of the north, and deal with him, and prevail. And he shall also carry their gods captive to Egypt with their princes and their precious articles of silver and gold, and he shall continue more years than the king of the north. Also, the king of the north shall come to the kingdom of the king of the south, but shall return to his own land. However, his sons shall stir up strife and assemble a multitude of great forces, and one shall certainly come and overwhelm and pass through. Then he shall return to his fortress and stir up strife. And the king of the south shall be moved with rage and go out and fight with him with the king of the north, who shall muster a great multitude, but the multitude shall be given into the hand of his enemy. When he has taken away the multitude, his heart will be lifted up, and he will cast down tens of thousands, but he will not prevail. For the king of the north will return and muster a multitude greater than the former and shall certainly come at the end of some years with a great army and much equipment.
Thank you, yes, yes, a lot, a lot there, a lot there. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna dive in in just, uh, just a moment. Okay, let's, uh, let's do this. Verse 14, verse 14 through verse 28, 14 through 28. Whoever, whoever would like to, like to read that.
In those times, many will rise against the king of the south. The violent men among your own people will rebel in fulfillment of the vision, but without success. Then the king of the north will come and build a siege ramp and will capture a fortified city. The forces of the south will be powerless to resist; even their best troops will not have the strength to stand. The invader will do as he pleases; no one will be able to stand against him. He will establish himself in the beautiful land and will have the power to destroy it. He will determine to come with the might of his entire kingdom and will make an alliance with the king of the south. And he will give him a daughter in marriage in order to overthrow the kingdom, but his plans will not succeed or help him. Then he will turn his attention to the co-slaying and will take many of them. But a commander will put an end to his insolence and will turn his insolence back upon him. After this, he will turn back towards the fortresses of his own country, but will stumble and fall to be seen no more. His successor will send out a tax collector to maintain the royal splendor. In a few years, however, he will be destroyed, yet not in anger or in battle. He will be succeeded by a contemptible person who has not been given the honor of royalty. He will invade the kingdom when its people feel secure, and he will seize it through intrigue. Then an overwhelming army will be swept away before him; both it and a prince of the covenant will be destroyed. After coming to an agreement with him, he will act deceitfully, and will, and with only a few people, he will rise to power. When the richest provinces feel secure, he will invade them and will achieve what neither his fathers nor his forefathers did. He will distribute plunder, loot, and wealth among his followers. He will not plot, he will plot the overthrow of fortresses, but only for a time. With a large army, he will stir up his strength and courage against the king of the south. The king of the south will wage war with a large and very powerful army, but he will not be able to stand because of the tax device against him. Those who eat from the king's provisions will try to destroy him. His army will be swept away, and many will fall in battle. The two kings, with their hearts bent on evil, will sit at the same paylock and lie to each other, but to no avail, because an end will come at the appointed time. The king of the north will return to his own country with great wealth, but his heart will be set against the holy covenant. He will take action against it and re-end the and return to his old covenant.
Thank you, Lisa, appreciate that. Well, this is some drama right here, is it not? Some intense drama. Oh, Lisa, I'm just curious, what, what translation do you have?
The Life Application Bible, New International.
Okay, 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 very good, very good. I, I, I was with you there, but there were words that you had that I didn't have, and it was rearranged, but, okay, very good, thank you, thank you. Uh, that's a, that's a great study.
That's a real Bible.
It is, yes, it is. As a matter of fact, I was gonna say it's a great study Bible. My, my, my mother had that Bible for years and...
Where, where was Robert reading from?
Robert, which, which translation do you have? It should be on the spot.
New Revised Standard Version.
New Revised Standard, okay, okay, very good, very good.
I've picked you and I, I was watching the NID, but every once in a while.
Yeah, oh, sure, sure, sure. Oh, oh, okay, I know we've got a, a lot to get through, but I, I did want to, uh, read the rest of 11. So whoever would like to, uh, read for us verse 29 through 45, please, please do.
At the time appointed, he shall return and come to the south. But this time it shall not be as it was before, for ships of Kidham shall come against him, and he shall lose heart and withdraw. He shall be enraged and take action against the holy covenant. He shall turn back and pay heed to those who forsake the holy covenant. Forces sent by him shall occupy and profane the temple and fortress. They shall abolish the regular burnt offering and set up the abomination that makes desolate. He shall reduce, he shall seduce within intrigue those who violate the covenant. But the people who are loyal to their God shall stand firm and take action. The wise among the people shall give understanding to many; for some days, however, they shall fall by sword and flame and suffer captivity and plunder. When they fall victim, they shall receive a little help, and many shall join them insincerely. Some of the wise shall fall so they may be refined, purified, and cleansed until the time of the end, for there is still an interval until the time appointed. The king shall act as he pleases. He shall exalt himself and consider himself greater than God and shall speak horrendous things against the god of gods. He shall prosper until the period of wrath is completed, for what is determined shall be done. He shall pay no respect to the gods of his ancestors or to the one beloved by women. He shall pay no respect to any other god, for he shall consider himself greater than all. He shall honor the god of fortresses instead of these, a god whom his ancestors did not know. He shall honor with gold and silver, with precious stones and costly gifts. He shall deal with the strongest fortresses by the help of a foreign god. Those who acknowledge him shall make more wealthy and shall appoint them as rulers over many and shall distribute the land for a price. At the end, excuse me, at the time of the end, the king of the south shall attack him. But the king of the north shall rush upon him like a whirlwind, with chariots and horsemen and with many ships. He shall advance against countries and pass through like a flood. He shall come into the beautiful land, and tens of thousands shall fall victim. But Edom and Moab and the main part of the Ammonites shall escape from his power. He shall stretch out his hand against the countries, and the land of Egypt shall not escape. He shall become ruler of the treasures of gold and, and of silver and all the riches of Egypt. And the Libyans and the Ethiopians shall follow in his train. The reports from the east and the north shall alarm him, and he shall go out with great fury to bring ruin and complete destruction to many. He shall pitch his palatial tents between the sea and the beautiful holy mountain; yet he shall come to his end, and no one will help him.
All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay, all right, what, what we have in many ways is, uh, we, we can look at this both as a, as a history lesson, but also, uh, there's, there's things in here that, uh, that I want to get to that's also prophetic. So, uh, i- i- if you would and, and feel led, let's, let's take some notes as a way of kind of bringing all of this together. Uh, this is not from the book. This is just, uh, research and some things that I, that I want you to, uh, to, to know and to be aware of. So take notes as you are led and, uh, if you would, just, just give me a few minutes here. Get us through it. Okay, so the, the last three chapters of, of this book, of the, of the book of Daniel, uh, is Daniel's last vision. Okay, that, that makes it, that makes it significant, okay? Uh, Daniel 11 gives us a vision of world history, okay? And I think one of the confusing things that, I think, it, it's always good to put names to these individuals. We, we can kind of get lost in all of this without, without the name. So I'm gonna attempt to do that, okay? So it's a vision of world history from Darius, okay? From King Darius to the Antichrist, okay? From Darius to, to the Antichrist. His vision is more of a nightmare, right? Okay, did you, did, did you kind of get that, that feel, that, that vibe there? He saw some of the worst dictators, okay, in history, and, and we, we see the, the details of that as well. Daniel saw not just one terrible dictator, but actually two. He saw two tyrants. Both will persecute God's people, okay? And that's, that's important. Both claim to be God, very dangerous, and both will persecute God's people. The first ruler is Antiochus, okay? Uh, Antiochus, and let me, let me, uh, spell out this name here. E.P.I.P., Epiphanes, E.P.I.P., H.A.N.I.E.S., okay? The first ruler is Antiochus Epiphanes. And then the second ruler is the Antichrist, okay? All right, a couple of other things, just kind of a, a summary and thank you to everyone that, that, that read here. Okay, so, so we can divide this chapter into two main parts, okay? Think of it in two seconds. The first part of the chapter deals with the near future. What is, what is to come, okay? The near future. The second part of the chapter deals with the far future. Near and far, near future, far future. The first part of it was future to Daniel, to Daniel himself. The second part of it is future for you and I, okay, for you and I. As we look at this chapter, it's part of it, or part of it is, is historical. It's, it's history. Also, it's been fulfilled and a part of prophecy, okay? So let, let, let's just kind of break down this, uh, this chapter, chapter 11, because 10 is setting it up here. 11 is what we'll, what we'll focus on, okay? So let, let's just for a minute look at chapter 11, verses 1 all the way through 35. 1 all the way through verse 35, okay? Deals with history, giving us historical context, okay? All of this history, okay, has been fulfilled, okay? It's been fulfilled. It can, it can also be corroborated historically, okay? And, and for you and I to, uh, read through and understand it, we have to understand it as historical prophecy, okay? Historical prophecy. Everyone agrees on this fact, being, being the, the biblical scholars, okay? Uh, beginning with Daniel 11:36, though, 11:36, okay? This is all future, okay? This is all future. It is the end time prophecy, okay? And that is where we can begin then to make this connection to the Book of Revelation, okay? End time prophecy. This is all future to us, okay? Future to us, meaning it has not been fulfilled yet, okay? There is a gap of time between Daniel 11:35, okay? And Daniel 11:36. That, that, that made, that made better sense to me. So much is going on here. So just think there is, there is this gap, gap of time there, okay? All right, let's, uh, let, let, let me just hit the, hit the highlights on the historical section here, okay? Going back, uh, to the first part of chapter 11, okay? Verses 1 through 35, okay? This is the historical prophecy part, okay? It deals with the near future, okay? This has already been fulfilled, okay? Okay, here's, here's what, here's what it, what it outlines, what it details, okay? Number one, the prophecy about Persia, the prophecy about Persia, okay? That comes from Daniel 11 and 2. And if you like dates, okay? Uh, your, your preacher often gets tripped up on dates. I used to be good about recalling dates, not so much anymore. But if you, if you want dates, I'll give you those dates. 536 through 334 B.C., okay? All right, okay. Number two, there is within these verses prophecy about Greece. Prophecy about Greece, okay? That comes from Daniel 11 and 3, okay? And those dates pick up right after Persia, 334 to 323 B.C. Third part here within these Scriptures, prophecy about Alexander the Great's successors, okay? 323 to 176 B.C., okay? So just as an example, okay? Daniel 11:4 through 20 deals with Alexander's successors, okay? Give you a, give you a reference point there, okay? All righty, uh, just, uh, just a couple of other things here, okay? Uh, the next prophecy is about Antiochus Epiphany, Epiphany. How'd I do, Nancy? Okay, good, she's nodding her head, yes, good, good, all right. On the right track here. Antiochus Epiphanes, okay? That is the next prophecy, okay? That reign 175 through 163 B.C., okay?
Say that again.
Yes, ma'am. Prophecy about Antiochus Epiphanes, 175 through 163 B.C., okay? Uh, to give you those biblical references there, or, or verses there, okay? Daniel 11:21 through 35, cover those 12 years there, okay? Okay, let's, uh, let's move into now the prophetic section, okay? Of, of this Scripture, okay? And I'll, I'll give you those verses, okay? Daniel 11, verses 46. Let me see, I think there's a, there's a typo, bear with me just for a minute. Forty-six, okay? Then, okay, I see what it is, I see what it is, okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Uh, Daniel 11:36 through 45, there we go. Daniel 11:36 through 45 deals with the Antichrist, okay? He deals with the end of time, uh, Daniel 11 and 40, okay? Uh, just, um, uh, to give you another, another name here, another name that's significant, okay? This was the view of, and I'll spell this name out. Not from Pineville, Louisiana, that's definitely not, definitely, definitely not a southern name, right? Hippolytus, okay? He lived from 170 through 235 A.D., okay? He was also a disciple of John the Apostle, okay? All right, just, uh, just a couple of other things about this section, okay? Okay, and just, just some, some, some theology here. The only way that you can know God personally is for you and I to be saved. Jesus said that you, uh, know God when you have eternal life, okay? Now let's back that up with Scripture. John 17 and 3 says, "Now this is eternal life, that they know you, the only true God." And Jesus... the only true God, and Jesus Christ, whom you have sent." So it tells us that God then is sovereign, okay? Is sovereign, even in the worst of times. And we see the worst of times for, for the people of faith in, in the, in the book of Daniel, okay? "The two kings, with their hearts bent on evil, okay, will sit at the table and lie to each other, but to no avail, because an end will still come at the appointed time." And that's Daniel 11 and 27, okay? And, and just, just a couple of other things. At the appointed time, okay? He will invade the south again, but this time the outcome will be different than what is before, okay? When bad things happen in the world, God is not surprised. He does not say, "What am I going to do?" Because he is sovereign. He, and, and write this down if you would. He is sovereign over history. God is sovereign over history. He is sovereign over current events. He is sovereign over evil. He is sovereign over evil dictators. He allows them to come to power and then decides how long that they will live. He is sovereign over everything that happens in our lives. That does not mean that we will understand it all, but here's the key. We can trust him. We can trust him. Okay, a, a couple of other things about the character of the Antichrist, okay? Let's, let's look at this and, and take some notes here. And, and the pastor gets, gets at this as well. The character of the Antichrist, okay? Number one, he's going to be powerful. He is going to be powerful, okay? Just to give an example here, we can look, reference, look at Daniel 11 and 36, where it says, "He will be successful until the time of wrath is completed," okay? And also, he does not worship any other god except the god of... Daniel 11:30, power, power, okay? Power, okay? Number two, character of the Antichrist. He will be proud. He will be proud, okay? Daniel 11 and 36, "He will exalt and magnify himself above every other god," okay? Number three, "He will be profane. He will be blasphemous. He will say unheard of things against the God of gods." That's Daniel 11 and 36. Now here's one. "He will be peculiar, okay? He will not do what everyone else is doing. He will be different. He shall pay no attention to the gods of his fathers or to the one beloved by women. He shall not pay attention to any other god, for he shall magnify himself above all." Daniel 11 and 37, okay? And then lastly, "He will be punished. There will be a downfall," okay? The chapter ends with these words, and we can, we can look at it again here. Verse, verse, let's pick it up with verse 45, chapter 11. "He shall plant the tents of his palace between the seas and the wars, holy mountain; yet he shall come to his end, and no one will help him." Okay? The second coming will take care of him. Jesus will destroy with the breath of his mouth, and he will blow him away, and with one breath, and the Antichrist is gone. Okay, just, just one other section, application for, for today, okay? Just, just a couple of, couple of thoughts here. As we, as we read through, through these last chapters, it does in many ways sound like a history lesson. It's, it's, it's lengthy, it's tedious. It mentions a bunch of kings, and none of them are even named. Just the king of the north, the king of the south. God is not mentioned one time in the chapter. How does this chapter, though, apply to us, okay? And, and I want us to, want us to just take note of a few things here. It tells us what we can trust in the word of God, okay? It tells us what we can trust in the word of God. That is key, okay? Number two, it tells us that we may be, in fact, and will be tested in this world. That we will be tested in this world, okay? In chapter 11, it also tells us that we can do great things, okay? Even in the worst of times, okay? Often in the word of God, it is said, "God himself, or by an angel, fear not, be bold, be courageous," okay? Think about that, though. We can do great things even in the worst of times. Okay, very good. Thank you for giving, giving me that, that moment. I hope, I hope that brought some, some clarity to, to this, to this chapter. Let's, let's move to the, to the book now, if you would, here. There was just a, a couple of, a couple of things that I wanted to mention here. Firstly, let's, let's pick up with page 288, page 288, once we, once we get there, okay? All righty, once, once we have, have arrived there, let, let, let's kind of do a, a brief look at chapter 10. Go, go to page, go to page 290. I, I think this was, this was helpful in giving us kind of a, a bird's eye view of what, what we need to know about 10. Look a little past halfway on this page. That last paragraph, right above the, the bolded print, it says, "Here in chapter 10, Daniel prays," okay? Would you please circle that word, praise? "He is a prayer warrior, a model for us." Daniel prays to God concerning the Jews' present failure to fulfill their responsibility. And God answers by giving him one of the most comprehensive messages about the future in the entire Bible, okay? In the entire Bible. What I, what, what I also noted on page 291 here, okay? The, the note here in the scriptures, also here in the book, top of page 291, about the glorious man from God, okay? While the man is not identified, okay? Again, we, we see this word coming up, Theophany. Circle that if you would, okay? A pre-incarnate appearance of the Lord Jesus Christ, okay? He is described almost exactly the way that Christ is described in Revelation 1:13 through 15. He, he goes on to say there's some dispute about that, but that's in fact the second time that that has happened in, in this, in this mighty book. So I, I, I tend to think absolutely that that can be the, the Savior himself. So I wanted us to, to note, to note that there. Let's, let's just turn, if you would. Well, well, I tell you what, let's go to page 293, okay? I, I appreciated the pastor's commentary here. Middle of the way on page 293, where it begins with the prince of Persia. Let's, let's, let's mark these two paragraphs. Bear with me, I want to read through this. "So the prince of Persia was obviously not a man, for no human could resist a messenger of God. This was one of Satan's demons. Evil is not an abstract concept. Every evil originates in a personality. Satan ordered the prince of Persia to do whatever it took to keep God's plan in Persia from moving forward. This record makes it apparent that Satan assigns his demons geographically." Thought this was interesting. "It's probable that he assigns one demon prince to head the satanic activity of each principality or government on the face of the earth. If there is a demon assigned to Persia, there is most likely a demon assigned to the other territories where you and I live. It's against this army of evil princes that we are in daily conflict." Thought that was powerful, and I want us to, want us to take note of that. Noting, of course, that, that biblical reference to, we're not just fighting against flesh and blood, right? But against evil forces, against principality. So please take note of that. I, I, I don't, I don't, meaning a spiritual warfare, okay? Spiritual warfare, I think, is, is very, very prevalent here. And, and it points us to, to that. Let's, let's just look, just as a, as a reference point, page 297, okay? We're, we're putting names now to, to these kings, giving us a, a better idea, okay? All right, it's this king here, that king there. Coincidentally, it is, it is all kings with, and beginning with the letter A. So please, and, and this is very helpful in that it has all of the biblical references as well. So take, take note of that. What, what I, what I want us to flip over to now, if you would, please? Because, because what I, what I, what I took from this is another theme. And this might go back to my, to my Boy Scout days too, is, is you and I, as, as believers, need to be aware, and we need to be prepared, okay? Awareness and preparedness, okay? That's for life, but that's also in our walk with Jesus Christ. And that's what, that's what kept, kept coming to me. You and I need to be aware of the truth of God's word, the relevance of God's word. You and I also need to be spiritually prepared as well. So unawareness, I, I think it's very important, okay? Making reference here to the bottom of page 3 of 3, okay? As an example, okay? The Old Testament's final description of the Antichrist, okay? And, and having these reference points. So let's just look at this. Unawareness, okay? An awareness that it is here, it is biblical, okay? And, and let's, let's just go over the bolded items, okay? Description of the Antichrist. "He will do what he desires," okay? Note that, please. "He will defy himself," okay? Deify, excuse me. What did I say? Defy, excuse me, excuse me. There, there you go. I do it all the time. Thank you, thank you. "He will deify himself." Number three, "He will deify the..." I'm gonna blame it on my contacts, okay? All right, all right. "He will defy the true God." Thank you. Number four, "He will disregard all religion." Oh, sorry, Elka, it is page 3 of 3, at the bottom, 3 of 3. I just want us to note the, the bolded print there, if you would. Yes, ma'am. And then, then turning over, please, to 3 or 4, 3 or 4. 5 through 10. "He will devote himself to the military. He will declare war against foreign powers. He will defend himself against other nations. He will defeat some early enemies. He will develop great wealth. And he will be defeated, and no one will come to his aid," okay? And, and just kind of building on those notes about the characteristics. This is, this is helpful about, about the, the description there. So star, star that section, if you, if you would, please. Let's, let's lastly turn over to 306 and 307. I thought this was, this was helpful as well. Pastor brings it all, brings it all together here. Let's, let's look at this in, in detail here, okay? Number one, "Discovered the power of praying God's promises." Amen, amen. Daniel did it, he was faithful to it, you, you and I too. Let, let's encourage one another to pray, to pray those promises. I'll, I'll just read a few here. "Daniel prayed the promises of God that were recorded in, or by Jeremiah, and God heard and answered them." Even when we don't hear them audibly, okay? Let's pray them. Let's encourage, encourage, encourage one another to pray those promises. Do, do, do me a favor, do, do something, if you would, please. If you have a study Bible, okay? Let's, let's just do this exercise together, okay? If you would, in the very back of your Bible, okay? You will have a concordance, okay? And it is a very, very detailed word search. If you would, please, go to the Ps and look under promise. Look under promise with me, okay? Pages are sticking together, I thought you... Okay. Not everybody, not everybody has the word promise. Okay, you got it, okay, I, I do, I do too. Yeah, yeah, promise, promises. I've got promised, promised, promises. Just, just as, as an example, to review, to look at the promise or promises of God, here, here's just a couple of examples. Under promises, the word promises. For all of the people of God, there are promises from 2 Corinthians 1 and 20, okay? Patience inherits, inherits the promises. Hebrews 6 and 12. Great and precious promises. 2 Peter 1 and 4, okay? So just, just a great, a great guide. You can use the, the concordance, it can, it can help you. It, it, it's always, always tempting, always tempting to, to use, use the phone. And that's, that's fine. I would say your first reference point can be, can be the word, and it's, and it's the concordance. Okay, number two, let's go back to, to page 306, please. Okay, uh, number two, let's go back to, uh, to page three oh six, please. Page three oh six. Number two, remember God's delays are not God's denies. Amen. Wow, that is powerful. Underline that, star that, please, okay? I heard a preacher once, you know, we've got this, um, this, uh, this Burger King, uh, uh, mentality, right? We want it our way, right away, okay? Uh, it, it doesn't mean if it doesn't come immediately, whatever that prayer request is, or whatever relief of that burden that God has denied, denied us. But, but just loo, look at this for a moment, okay? Uh, bottom of page three oh six. Yes ma'am?
In this section here, what impressed me here is, "From the first day that you set your heart to understand and to humble yourself before your God, your word will be heard." And that's, I feel it's very important.
Yes, absolutely. Amen, amen. I agree. Uh, the, uh, the, the text here, uh, "For twenty-one days, Daniel poured out his heart to God in prayer and in fasting. During those twenty-one days, it must have seemed to Daniel as if God weren't listening." Uh, we, we can, we can put our, ourselves right into Daniel's shoes. We, we, we've been there. We know, we know of those situations. We know of those people. Maybe that is, maybe that is in fact to you. Uh, little did Daniel know that God had heard his prayer from the very moment he began. Uh, from the first day that you set your heart to understand and to humble yourself, excuse me, before your God, your words were heard. Amen. Pray and not lose heart. That's Luke eighteen and one, and then Ephesians six and eighteen. The apostle Paul told us to pray with all perseverance. Amen. Uh, number three, never underestimate or overestimate the power of Satan. The power of Satan. So very important, so very important. That awareness and that, that preparedness. That's, that's being, being prepared. Prepare yourself prayerfully, biblically, okay? Uh, that is, that is key. Okay, all right, folks, uh, with, uh, with the, the little bit of time that, uh, that, that we have less left, let's, um, let's look ahead and let's do this. For next week, let's go ahead and finish our book. So that will be page three oh nine, three oh nine, okay? Three oh nine, through the epilogue, which is, uh, three forty. So page three oh nine through three forty in the agent's book, and then chapter twelve in the word of God. And we'll, we'll bring, uh, bring that to a, to a close. Um, let's see. Now, Paula, did you have any announcements you want to share with, with the clients, base?
I just remembered that the, uh, casserole sale is Sunday the seventeenth. If you are going to participate with Patty in the kitchen, that's tomorrow, Thursday, nine o'clock. I think they're starting in the kitchen. And, um, you can bring casseroles yourself. Make them and, uh, make sure they're frozen. You don't have to bring them tomorrow. You can bring them on up to Sunday, Sunday morning if you want to bring them. That would be okay, just bring them. And they'll price them yourself. We kind of talked about how to do that. If you have to buy supplies to bake your casserole, then, um, tally all of that and then maybe multiply it by three. Vegetable casserole, it's gonna be less than a casserole with meat in it. So, uh, just use your discretion in, in baking with size and type. So that's our last fundraiser for this year. And ladies, don't forget December ninth for the chocolate man and what we're going to do at six o'clock that evening. It's gonna be fun. Gonna enjoy it. And be sure and let me know that you're coming, though I, I kind of need a tally if at all possible.
Okay, all right, Paula, thank you, thank you. Uh, yes sir, yes sir.
I haven't signed up myself, but, uh, don't forget to, uh, consider being a part of Journey to Bethlehem.
Thank you, thank you.
There are places where you can just sit, which is one of those spots I'm looking for.
Okay, very good, very good. So that, that, that sign up table is, uh, right as you walk into the family life center on the, on the right. Uh, and also a big, a big thank you to the trustees and, and to Robert. We, we now have our railing up as you were walking up. I'm sure you've seen that. So thank you, thank you. A big thank you to, to Robert and his leadership and the trustees. We also have the railing up in the family life center on the step. So that is, that is up and they are working on the north side of our, of our building toward daycare as well. So that'll, that'll be installed today as well. Yes, sir, okay? And, and also something that's in the works as well just as, as a way of, of providing good hospitality for, for our church members. We, we are, we are planning to move on a golf cart ministry as well. So that'll, that'll just help with, um, help the folks getting from their car up to the, up to the building as well. Yes ma'am?
If Regal were here, she would want me to spread the word.
Please.
Uh, I think it's Thursday, December fifth. I know it's December fifth.
It is.
At six P M. is the large group dinner with friends where we start all over for next year. So I would encourage you, any of you who have never been, I had, I just have to tell you that my kids, my grown adult children said, "You're going where mom?" And I said, "To a church thing." And they said, "Don't you know all those people? We've been in that church for forty something years." And I said, "Well, but not the same way that you get to know them if you go out to dinner and you get to visit with them every day." Elizabeth, my older daughter, said, "That just sounds awful."
Oh.
She said, "I just call it dinner with strangers." And that's what I call it. But at any rate, the point is that it is wonderful because you get, I mean, like, listen, I have the same same as you, wife. Until I went to dinner with her, I didn't even know how funny she was. And I would encourage you, if you think you know everybody, uh, I, it, it's, you just come on December the fifth. And if you can't come, you just tell a weird book, add your name to the pot and you'll get drawn and you'll be, probably put in a group.
And she's catering gumbo.
Yes, that's right. It's catering gumbo. It's at six P M., but I'm just trying to spread the word.
Absolutely.
So it's not just those of us who keep going to dinner with friends.
Please do, yes.
You know, other people too.
Yeah.
Some of them are strangers.
That's right.
That's gonna be nothing if we call them.
Okay, okay. Patty said it's gonna be a hundred dollars a hole. Seventy, seventy. Yeah, ten dollars a hole, right.
Ten percent.
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Angels, we have lots of angels left downstairs.
Okay, folks, uh, li, listen up. Rachel's got a, an important announcement. Go ahead.
We have lots of angels downstairs. I don't know if there's any shoes left, but we do have a lot of angels from the fire department and the children's home left to go choose from, so.
What's the procedure of doing that?
You pick up the tag. You sign the tag out on the piece of paper there with the corresponding number and go by, and follow the instructions on the tag. They're, they're all a little bit different. So follow the instructions on the tag, okay?
On the back, huh?
Yeah, some of them are on the back, some are on the front.
Amen. All right, folks, let me pray for us, please. Thank you. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, glory be to your name, Lord. Our, our church, Lord, is growing, Lord. We just pray the Holy Spirit into everything that we do that we can make the Savior, Lord, uh, the center of all that we do. Praise and glory be to your name. In Jesus we pray. Amen, amen.